Thank you. I'd like to ask council's permission, since there are so many members in the audience that are here for C4, and I think that we can probably have that discussion real quick and allow them to leave, and then we can get into the two other items we have, C2 and C3. With that, yes? Yes?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so Mayor, for item C4, I am going to recuse myself from this item due to potential conflict of economic interest.
Thank you very much.
I too have a conflict with Morro Bay and Bloom. I'm a member of that group.
I don't think that you being a member is a conflict, is it?
No, okay, great.
She's just a member of a nonprofit, I don't think. Jen's, Councilmember Ford's is different, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If you're just a dues-paying member, but you're not part of management or owner of the group, then there shouldn't be a conflict.
I dig in the dirt, that's it.
All good. Thank you. Thank you. With that, City Manager, Kimball?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. This is such a pleasure for, that I can present it before the City Council. I wasn't involved to begin with, but look at, this is all happy stuff. It's a city's tradition to allocate a community grant every year, and this year, there is a budget item of $60,000 to be allocated out for this program. $35,000 from general fund, $25,000 from ARPA fund. And then, we received many applications here, and more than what we can have money for. The summary is included in the packet. The committee, so there's a committee, Councilmember Edward, and then some representative from the Finance Advisory Committee worked together and reviewed the applications based on a policy prior adopted by the City Council through Resolution 6719. They reviewed, the committee reviewed application, and then before, tonight, they formulated recommendation, which is included in the packet where we were before. So with that, council discussion, and our recommendation is just, is to approve the recommended amount.
Thank you very much, City Manager Kimball, and thank you to the two Citizens Finance Advisory Board members that participated in this, as well as Councilmember Edwards. And with that, I will ask council questions. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
No, just a comment that I'm always impressed every year with who applies and how many applications there are, in that we are able, as a city, to make some funding available for this, and I think that's great.
Totally agree. Councilmember Edwards, or, excuse me, Councilmember Landrum, I'm looking to my right.
I don't have any questions right now.
Councilmember Edwards, questions?
Yeah, I just, as being a part of the committee, I just want to thank formerly Jean Johnson and Brian Dorfman, who are part of the CFAC Committee, for helping, you know, the three of us. We spent an awful lot of time, hours seriously, looking over these applications, and it's a tough ask when you have quite a bit over what we have for our budget. And so, we worked really hard, and, you know, there were other factors going on, too, in terms of how you could allocate the money, some of which was from the ARPA funds with relationship to COVID. Some of it was from our general fund, and then another part needed to go toward youth-serving programs. So it was a little bit more complicated than I expected going in, but I'm really proud of the work that the committee did.
Thank you. With that, I will open public comment on item C4.
Richard Sadowski, Homefront EJ Morro Bay. We have a application in with you guys for the Morro Bay Community Grant for a project we called M-Beam, Morro Bay Estuary Air Monitoring Project. In 2019, we received a Morro Bay Community Grant, and we purchased a handheld air quality meter that is capable of measuring atmospheric carbon dioxide. And for a year, we went around, we have 10 points around the Morro Bay Estuary, and we established some baseline atmospheric carbon dioxide data. And during that time, we were able to start collaborating with the California Cal Poly University Carbon Lab, studying ocean acidification in the estuary. And so, now, and last year, we were involved in the inaugural College Core Program, where we had two interns, and this year, we have four interns working with us on M-Beam. And we were seeking funding for, to put in a stationary air monitor that's capable of measuring atmospheric carbon dioxide, which is not a critical pollutant by CARB or a PCD. So if we can get that, we can start giving that data to the researchers studying the estuary. So we'd appreciate your support. And recently, we received a grant from the San Luis Obispo Community Foundation, and we're looking for, hopefully, getting some matching funds, so we can buy an air, a stationary air monitoring station. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, council and members. My name is Christine Robertson. I am the Executive Director of the San Luis Coastal Education Foundation. This is our first time applying to the city for these community grant funds, and we are so grateful for the committee's recommendation to support the request that we put in front of you, which is to help one of our initiatives that we call our Equity in Outdoor Science Camp program. Our foundation is an independent 501(c)(3). We work in partnership with the local school district, and we have a focus on innovation and equity. Across our district, we have 16 school sites, 10 elementaries, three of which are on the coast, one of which is here in Morro Bay, which is Delmar Elementary. And when we look across our school system, what we see are a bunch of amazing kids, but also profound disparity. When we began looking at which of our school sites have the opportunity to take their kids in 5th grade or 6th grade to a multi-night immersive outdoor science camp experience, what we saw is historically, many of our affluent schools are able to reliably offer that experience to their kids, whereas some of our sites that have a higher percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students, and therefore, maybe not as robust of a community-based PTA, often cannot offer that experience to their kids. Delmar Elementary is one of our school sites that has historically struggled to raise enough funds to give kids that experience. When we broke down the data, we understood why, and in this proposal, you'll see, the average number of socio-economically disadvantaged kids in our San Luis Obispo schools is about 26% of this year's eligible class. Over in Los Osos, we see the number of socio-economically disadvantaged kids tick up markedly, from 26% out in Los Osos, it goes up to 34% at Monarch Grove, and 46% out at Baywood Elementary. When we look at, here at Delmar, what we see is over 80% of kids in the eligible class are socio-economically disadvantaged. So when you think about asking the parents or the PTA to fundraise to cover, you know, sometimes $400 to $500 per student to give them this experience, that's cost prohibitive. And so, we are excited to be partnering with the city to begin addressing that need and that disparity. And as we put in our application what the foundation is committed to do, is match every dollar that the city is committing, so that not only are we together addressing this year's need, but we're also putting funds on account with the school to address next year's need as well. So I just thank you for being a, hopefully, a great partner in this equity work. Thank you.
Betty Winholtz, and I'd like to speak to two of the groups that were not funded, which I think should be funded. And I suggested to you in an email how to do that. One is the one that Mr. Sadowski mentioned, which was about the air monitoring around the basin of the estuary. And my argument for that was that as we get industrial people that want to come here, whether they're through the boats, or the batteries, or whatever, that we need a baseline. We need to know what we have, so when they say, "Well, we'll do this much," you have a database that says, "Hey, but you're going to take us up this far in our greenhouse gases," or whatever it is, that we can then get mitigation from them. This will give you data for that. And we've supported it in the past, and I think it's important to continue supporting them. The second one is this jacket that I'm wearing tonight, and that's the Honor Flight. And I can't believe that this isn't something that you would not want to support. It's only $3,000, it's a token. I don't know if erroneously believe that no one from Morro Bay has ever gone on this, but I believe the data that was given to the committee said that we've had 10 people, 10 veterans from Morro Bay that have been on this trip prior. I was fortunate to accompany one of the two gentlemen that went this fall, so I know two went this fall. And I know that I am recommending three more, that I have communicated to other veterans about what a wonderful experience this was, that they get their names on the list. So it's very much a Morro Bay program, as much as it isn't. And I think the shocking thing is, these are veterans. You know, these gifts that you're giving out to these organizations are showing your values. And so, it was shocking to me to see that you are not honoring veterans, because we would not be sitting here today if it wasn't for our veterans. And so, I think this is the least amount that you could give to them. The whole program is to honor those who haven't been honored, and we know that the Korean War wasn't even declared a war, it was a police action. And then there are the Vietnam veterans, that were told, when they get home, "We're giving you civilian clothes to put on before you hit the streets," because that's the nature of where the US is right now, because they're not, they were so against the war, they didn't, it wasn't important. It was important for those veterans to be protected, so they came back in civilian clothes, not in their uniforms. And so, this organization's trying to make up for that, and I think that's really important. And we don't have World War II veterans anymore, because they've obviously died out. So I am encouraging you to alter this budget tonight, and allow for those two organizations to receive some money.
So I didn't realize that this has already been sort of settled, but when I saw that Honor Flight was on the list for $3,000, I wanted to speak on their behalf. And I kept thinking, I just heard a story of someone who went on an Honor Flight, and you have an accompanying person that goes with the veteran, and I remember, that was Betty, so I just went and said, "Hey, you know, is this gentleman from Morro Bay?" Yes, he was. But it's, I don't think that, you know, the Honor Flight knows in advance who might need this trip, and/or when, you know? It's just that, it's an awesome thing that this organization exists to do this very honorable thing, to take them, and I wish I could have gone, have been on a trip like Betty did. Anyway, I also want to say that on this, in the Honor Flight Board, I could be wrong, I could be out of date, but two Morro Bay members of that board are Janice House and John Gadjos. They have spoken to many community meetings that I've been at, so just because you're looking at bad data, according to what Ms. Winholtz said, I would ask you to reconsider this money for our veterans. When we talk about millions and hundreds of thousands of dollars tonight, you know, we're talking about $3,000 to an organization that deserves it, that gives honor back to our veterans. So, thank you very much, reconsider.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
AGP?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and/or comments. Looking to my left.
I do want to comment, the applications that we received, it was about looking at the complete application, the criteria, and also evaluating on it to supporting activities that directly benefit Morro Bay residents. And I think that, if I remember correctly, I don't recall seeing names of people, or how many people were from Morro Bay. So I would have to look at that again, but I, I'm not going to argue the point, I have a father who was a World War II vet, so I know the importance of that, and if he was around, it would be something he'd probably want to do. Having said that, with regard to the E-Beam, I think there was some components or criteria that we felt were missing from that application. And my understanding is that, and I would have to ask the clerk, I don't recall them receiving funding the last time that they asked for it. My recollection, and I believe Mr. Sadowski spoke to this as well, is they didn't receive funding last year, they did in 20, maybe the year or two prior to that.
Okay. Thank you, I wasn't sure about that.
Councilmember Barton?
I think it's a testament to our community in the kind of applications that came in, and the ones that were carefully selected, because there was, there's never enough money to go all the way around, and so, I think the committee did a good job.
Councilmember Landrum?
I, this is just a hard, a hard thing to do. I feel like, I would like to see there be some way to give something to all of the groups that were, especially the ones that qualified. I would, I think the Honor Flight deserves some, maybe we could modify something, or pull from another one somehow, maybe, I don't know, this is hard.
Well, and so, I guess to that question, Councilmember Edwards, you said on this committee, and none of the, none of the rest of us did, so, and I appreciate your time, and I know it's very difficult, and, you know, I would, I would look to an opportunity, when there was a comment about potential change of use on the waterfront, as far as offshore wind, that there are going to be many opportunities for public benefits through what they're offering. As Councilmember Landrum alluded to earlier, they're just getting ready to begin those, and those are opportunities for us to ask for all those things, and that seems that that would be a very relevant item for us to ask for support for, from them, as far as that goes. That being said, Honor Flight, you know, I too know, we have many residents from this community that have participated, and that serve and volunteer on that committee. And so, I guess my question, and if you were looking to things that directly benefited Morro Bay residents, was my question then on the choice of funding the diversity, San Luis County Diversity Program, and what, and I'm trying to look through here and see on that one, because I don't remember why, why the choice would be made for that, then perhaps, over Honor Flight or one of the others, if that's, if, the comment was that it had a direct benefit to Morro Bay residents.
Yeah, I was looking at that one, too.
I guess I just want to understand the Diversity Coalition, San Luis County?
I thought they had an Arroyo Grande address in there, no?
I mean, I'm comfortable with all of, all of the other choices, and I support them, and I wish there was money for everybody, I agree with, you know, everybody's sentiments, we all know that.
They have a, they have an Arroyo Grande address.
And we did the, the Race Matters, $1,000 already on that, which was, you know, some diversity program. So, yeah, I would just, I guess.
I like that.
I guess I'm just looking at somewhere.
They had a $6,000 ask. I wish I, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wish I had that in front of me, exactly the details. But the, I was, let's see, the other one, well, I can tell you this, the one that we did have in question a bit, and we had long discussion over, was the Morro Bay Art Association is putting in a floor, so it's going towards flooring. And so, we had a tough time trying to figure out, you know, how that fit into the parameters of the policy. But we recognize that there are classes taught in there, there are events in there, and of course, many of our community members frequent the art association. So that was one I can honestly say we were looking at.
So how would you feel if we were to allocate part of that money to Honor Flight, $1,500 of it to Honor Flight, and still give them money, but put some to Honor Flight?
Which, which one, the, do the?
Morro Bay Art Association.
Not, not the Diversity Coalition?
They're only getting $2,100.
Yeah, we, we already did work on trimming them down, it was one that we did right away. So, and I, I apologize, I can't remember the exact details on that one, I wish I had it with me.
I just am uncomfortable with it being Arroyo Grande, like, it doesn't seem like it's the community.
Well, it's, if the company is located there, it has nothing to do with that they're not.
There are programs offered in Morro Bay through them?
That's a great question, but that's not what was in the application, so, you know, we went strictly with the city policy and, and the requirements of the application, so...
Well, it's just, you alluded to that comment with Honor Flight, that, or in the comments here, that there wasn't, wasn't information that somebody specifically was from Morro Bay, but then you're not giving me that same information on the other two items, that whether or not it's specific to Morro Bay, so I'm kind of questioning why that would even be relevant then with Honor Flight, if that was the same criteria for the other two, or for the other one, for the Diversity Coalition.
Well, maybe we can split the two.
That would work for me.
Yeah.
Me too.
For everyone.
Yeah.
$1,000 from the Diversity, and $1,000 from the Art Association, and give Honor Flight $2,000.
Yeah, I like that.
Would that work?
I would like to ask the clerk, though, if that's okay, in terms of the division of our monies with regard to youth service, because I can't remember that. That was also part of the...
You've, let's see, you're...
That's general fund money, both of those.
Yeah, but there's money that has to be $10,000 specifically.
That's the ARPA funds.
I think you'll still be fine, because you've given $7,150 toward the community foundation, and then a portion of the Diversity Coalition is also for educational programming, including schools in Morro Bay, Morro Bay High School.
Yeah, that's what it was.
In particular. And you have funding then for the Equity in Outdoor Science Camp as well, so you've, you've taken care of the youth programs.
Yeah, up to you guys, but I did think there was something with youth, that's why I asked.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we've met the criteria, yeah.
If you're, are you good with, are you?
I'm good with splitting the two, I think that's a better way to go.
Councilmember Barton, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I move that we distribute the money as it's...
Presented with the change?
As it's presented with the change to give Honor Flight $2,000, splitting that between Diversity Coalition and the Morro Bay Art Association.
Perfect. And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'm going to do a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Can we just clarify, the motion is to adopt Resolution 71-23 with the change that you noted?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, and thank you to those who stayed this evening, and thank you for all you do in the community, we appreciate it. With that, we'll wait for Councilmember Ford to get back, and we will move on to item C2. It should go somewhere.
It happens every time in that, that kind of a situation.
Okay, item C2.
They're all wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Me? Thank you, Mayor, council members. At your last regular meeting, council had directed staff to come back with an agenda item to review and potentially reconsider the city of Morro Bay's position on the National Marine Sanctuary. And so, I have provided you with some information. Staff recommends that the city council review the information, and determine whether to, one, maintain your current opposition, two, change your position to support the sanctuary, three would be to take no position, and number four, we suggested that you could request an extension of the comment period to NOAA. However, as of last week, we have information indicating that NOAA does not intend to extend that period, so tomorrow will be the last day to make comments. We don't really see any fiscal impact to any of the positions you might take on the subject. As you know, there were several documents prepared over the last several years, one of them in 2012 was the resolution to oppose the sanctuary. There were several letters written to continue to oppose the sanctuary, and the final letter in '22 was reiterating the city's position to oppose the sanctuary due to the fact that there were some issues that the city wanted to have them address. Those issues included, excuse me, one second here, let me get back up to my notes. It included conflicts with the commercial fishing industry and the traditional working harbor uses. Also, there was some issue regarding how the sanctuary would be controlled, and then the possible expansion. And so, we spent some time investigating those issues, and while there was very limited time to do that research, the way we understand it is that regarding commercial fishing, the Chumash Heritage National Sanctuary does not include any new regulations proposed on commercial fishing. However, we do note that future new regulations are not excluded, and the fact that the sanctuary doesn't have any direct jurisdiction on imposing regulations on commercial fishing, but they will be able to influence commercial fishing regulations by their recommendations to those agencies. The second issue had to do somewhat with governance and also concern about dredging, and our, our information that we have regarding the dredge site is that if the Morro Bay dredge disposal site is within the sanctuary, and quite honestly, I haven't been able to confirm if it is within it or not. if it is within it or not within it, it is grandfathered in, so that disposal site is not affected. However, if the site were, if there was a request to either enlarge the site or move the site, then that would require sanctuary recommendation for that also. And then finally, there was concern about how the sanctuary advisory council was going to be made up, and our investigation into that indicates that there's really no change to that. They are an advisory council. They're made up of local tribes, of local agencies, however, not including the city of Morro Bay as one of those agencies. So, that's what we know at this point. We would ask for your recommendation on to how you would like staff to proceed with this.
We're just having a hard time hearing you because the heater kicked on.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
Is there anything I can repeat for you? Okay.
We're good. Thank you. Thank you. And you said that the city would not be, or would be?
Would not be.
Would not be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I should say the city has not been offered that, to be on that advisory committee.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you Harbor Director Chafon. I realize that there was a really huge time constraint there, and I appreciate what you pulled together in such a short period of time. And really, the idea to bring this forward is primarily to provide information to the public as well as our council on why we took the stance when we did in the past, but also, you know, where have we come, you know, what do we know now that we didn't know then, if there were any new revelations that have taken place in that amount of time since council last discussed this. But we now have a new council, while the majority is new, and I just felt it was appropriate for us. I mean, I felt like we kind of owe it to the public, because we did have quite a few people come forward asking us, you know, why are we not supporting the sanctuary, or please support the sanctuary? So I felt like, in full transparency, it's important for us to have this conversation in public before you, so that we can just get some clarification, but also if we have any new ideas regarding the sanctuary. So, my question is, do we know if we were part of the conversation, being part of the advisory council when we were originally in the, within the borders of the sanctuary, or will we cut out of it because they pulled the border back from the Morro Bay area? So, do you think that that has something to do with why we are not included in the advisory council? And do you think there's potential for us to be included in the advisory council if those borders were expanded?
And I don't think I'm going to be able to answer that accurately. From my recollection of what I read, there are specific, again, agencies that are being asked. I don't see where any cities are, you know, being involved in that, so I don't know whether it's just staying away from municipalities or not. I do believe that some of the agencies being asked are not necessarily governmental agencies. So, you know, again, I can't get into how they decide, made those decisions.
I respect that. Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Councilmember Edwards?
I'm going to try to position it a different way, Mr. Chafon. So, if the sanctuary advisory committee is formed as required by NOAA, what does that mean maybe for the city? What does that mean for us? If we, for example, needed to change the dredging site, if we wanted to do anything?
So, my understanding that advisory council will only make recommendations, the proper agencies that would then either approve or disapprove of those specific areas. In the case of dredging, you know, there's a lot of permitting that has to take place with any of that. They would simply be able to make a recommendation, yes or no. Again, they don't have the authority to, I think, deny or approve that. So, in my opinion, we just are losing a seat at the table when it comes to being able to make recommendations. Not that we can't make it through other agencies, but our direct seat at the table would not be there.
Would you look at that as another layer of governance for us to move through or go through then?
Well, it's clearly another layer of governance, because they're going to have the ability to comment on all permits that would be issued in the sanctuary.
Okay. You mentioned in the report, Mr. Chafon, that there were some items of concern that were addressed, but that there were other questions that arose. Could you speak to those questions and you're, that you came up with?
Yeah, so I think the area, they haven't, there hasn't been a lot of change, quite honestly, over the past several years in terms of what was originally proposed, other than the position of the sanctuary and the elimination of the area by Morro Bay. But in terms of how it's organized and how it recommends, really hasn't changed that much.
May I, are you finished? No, I'll wait.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me for interrupting. It's 9:30, and so I'd like to ask council permission to finish this item as well as C3. Is they are both time sensitive? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, sorry for that. No, thank you. I know. Well, I've been watching the clock. Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
This was a very complex thing to work your way through. And I sort of, at the end, I thought, oh, I kind of like the idea of an extension of the comment period, but that's out. So, we're back to the pieces inside here. I was glad to see that the dredge disposal site can be grandfathered in, so that's a plus. That the revised location of the proposed sanctuary has been modified to exclude the harbor entrance and the location of possible cables that could connect offshore wind turbines to the power grid, so that's a plus. And then I wasn't crazy about that the city of Morro Bay is not included as one of the possible government agencies to be part of the sanctuary advisory council. So, you know, it was kind of a back and forth, but I'm leaning towards it, so.
I don't have any questions right now.
I'll reserve mine. Thank you with that. I will open public comment on item C2, and I have one speaker slip. Thank you, from Janice Peters.
Can I have 10 minutes? I have 10 years of experience on this. No, I'll try and keep it tight. I seriously have been working on this issue for a long time while I was in office, which is over 10 years ago now. The Santa Cruz, when the sanctuary went in there, their dredge disposal suddenly became something that they had to get approved through NOAA. They couldn't get it approved in time. So, the window for times for dredging and everything passed, and they couldn't do it. That's the problem with dealing with NOAA. Right here in your notes here, it says that NOAA has not responded to any of our questions about this for this meeting. That's the problem with dealing with NOAA. They're on the East Coast. When I went back to Washington, I don't know if you found this when you were back there, but they don't really know about the West Coast much at all. They have no idea the issues that we're dealing with are not the same as a harbor in New Jersey. They just don't understand that. Initially, this was brought up to the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce, saying that they wanted to be the gateway to the sanctuary, and they didn't even invite us to their meeting. And we were the ones that were going to be suffering from this. Our fishermen have opposed it all along. It says, no, they don't have any new regulations now, but neither did they did when they had reserve areas in the ocean for fishing, and then they put them in afterwards. And we have no seat at the table. We have no authority for what happens in our own harbor with our own fishing industry, which is the basis of our community. It just hasn't changed. They want, they say it's protection, but it's not. It protects us for some things, but there are already other protections in place for things like drilling and stuff, that we're already fighting and finding out that the federal agency is more important anyway. So, this is just adding another layer of government oversight, another delay to anything that we have to go through. We've heard about the Coastal Commission tonight, what we have to go through for that. This just puts another thing on it. And it's a thing that immediately hurts both our dredging possibilities. We go back to Washington every year to beg for dredging money. If we don't have it, the estuary closes up. It's not just the harbor. I mean, this is vital to our existence here in Morro Bay. We can't have to ask for that every year and then hope they put it in their schedule. It's, you know, okay. And the fishing industry needs our support as much as possible. They have already suffered from so many different regulations and the pandemic and everything else. This is our livelihood. It's important to us. It's important to our community, to our citizens, to our tourists. So, I just, the only recommendation I can see here that's worth it is to reinstate the fact that we are opposed to the sanctuary, because they have not addressed any of our issues previous to this. They've just ignored them, and so does NOAA. Thank you.
Terry Simons, Morro Bay. Several speakers have spoken to having a seat at the table. There's an old joke that says, if you don't have a seat at the table, you're probably on the menu.
Richard Sadowski, Homefront EJ, Morro Bay. I started being involved in this, the Chumash Heritage Marine Sanctuary in 2012, when PG&E had a high-energy seismic survey scheduled to be right there in front of Estero Bay. I was a co-founder with Mandy Davis and Marla Joe-Breton at the time, and we started Coast Alliance, had all the fishermen on board. And one of the groups that we had on board was the Northern Chumash Tribal Council, and the administrator was a friend of mine, Fred Collins. And after we successfully were able to stop that boat, I started collaborating with and working with Fred, and he started wanting to get this, it's a precedent-setting marine sanctuary. And the focus of the marine sanctuary, regardless of what you hear about the fishing and all that, the focus is no offshore oil drilling and no offshore mining. That's the main two key points that they're not allowing. Now, recently, NOAA's suggestion had removed the Estero Bay from the limits, and I've been an advocate to restate those limits from Monterey all the way down to the Channel Islands Sanctuary. And, you know, the sanctuary work started back in like 1990s with Carl Kempton. And, you know, if you ever, if you guys get onto site, you can look at all the extensive information there regarding the importance of preserving this area. So, you know, and, you know, as a, I'm a first generation, both my parents survived the World War II through Poland, and I'm a, in first of my family, born in the United States. But I have a understanding of the relationship, the relationship that the First Peoples have with the land. And this is of great importance. This is a precedent-setting global thing that is happening here. And, you know, Morro Bay not being in supportive of that is kind of disappointing, at the very least.
Is there a way to do like a hybrid system with like small business principles for river control and not NOAA? Because I was doing the interviews with the matriarch and some of the tribal people from, that were of this area about this thing. They had nothing but horrible things to say about NOAA's and every concern. So, I don't know much about it, but I know the natives have been trying and just being ignored as well, so.
Anyone else for public comment on item C2? AGP, do we have anyone on the line?
Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
I can't hear you. No, thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. More questions or comments? I'll look to my right. Councilmember Landrum?
I, so, I'm going to ask this another time. I think it's like the third time you've heard this, Director Chafon. But, so, just to make sure I'm totally clear on this, the dredging would be an issue if we were in the sanctuary. We would have to get NOAA's approval.
Councilmember Landrum, the way I understand it, the way I read it, the existing disposal site would be grandfathered into the sanctuary. That's what's read, that's what I was able to gather from what I read. If we, if it needed to be enlarged, or if it needed to be moved, or if a second disposal site needed to be developed, that would require approval. And the sanctuary would be able to comment on that.
Okay, so if we ever were to dredge the back bay by the State Park Marina, would that be, like, in that case, we would have to get NOAA's approval? Or the sanctuary's approval?
Not if the disposal site that is currently permitted was being used, is my understanding.
Okay.
The existing disposal site, again, from my understanding, is grandfathered in. But any addition to that, any increase in size, anything outside of that existing permit would require a new process to go through and get approval.
Okay, that's how I understood it, too.
So that would create that second layer, another layer.
For the back, the State Park Marina?
If any change to the disposal site was necessary, if it needed to move, if it needed to be enlarged, correct.
Okay. But it's supposed to be taken off-site, so that wouldn't be?
That wouldn't affect it.
Yeah, okay. I, you want my comments? I, as far as, it sounds, that's how I understood it, too, is that we could dredge as we have been dredging? Is that what?
So I guess I would ask, you know, we do the channel every seven years. Supposed to be this next year, and as we know, it's being postponed because of the steelhead, and we've silted in so much back there, so now it's being pushed back to 2025. So, then, and they're different times. I know they dredge the channel, the harbor mouth at a different time as the inlet, but I don't know if those spoils are put in the same location as, you know, I guess that would be grandfathered regardless of where those spoils were, too. They would, both situations would be grandfathered in, correct?
Mayor Wixson, that would be my understanding, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just, as long as we could still do that. I mean, I realize that it impacts the fishermen, but I think that there already, the potential for the offshore wind is a greater impact to them. And to me, this is the lesser of the two evils, if you will, to support the sanctuary. I don't, however, support the name of it. I strongly don't support the name of it. I don't think it's inclusive to the tribes that are from Morro Bay.
Councilmember Barton, comments?
Councilmember Burton, comments?
Still, I'm still mulling this over.
I'll come back. Councilmember Edwards, comments?
Yeah, a question. I was, so essentially, the main decider of all things, which seems to be NOAA here, right, didn't respond to our questions, right? And so I'm wondering, one of my questions off of that is, are there any other protections in place right now for the drilling, let alone for the fishing industry? Are there any other protections in place right now? Am I being too general?
Two separate questions.
All right, loaded. Is there any protection in place for the drilling as of right now?
Councilmember Edwards?
If we're not in this area?
I would not be able to answer that question.
That's fine. Because we, we didn't, we had these questions and they weren't, we weren't responded to, correct? Yeah. So are there any other protections that you know of, Mr. Shifon, that are in place for the fishing industry right now if we were to remain outside of the sanctuary? Because as I understand that we discussed earlier, this advisory group that we are not included in right now very greatly concerns me. And if they can actually make recommendations, even though they can't make the regulations, they can absolutely, in my mind, still impact indirectly or directly our fishing industry. So I'm just trying to get an idea if there are any other protections in place, if we know. Exactly.
Struggling for.
I apologize. I am not trying to get you into not having an answer for these things. I guess my point is, is I am still greatly concerned that without a response from NOAA, we are still left with questions. So that's where I'm sitting right now.
Thank you, Mayor Wixson. I appreciate the comments that have been made so far by our council. You know, going into this, I, I kind of had an idea of what we, you know, what we've learned from the, the first time it came to council and where we are now. But I just really was kind of curious if there was more in-depth information that I was missing. And it, after looking at the report, not so much. And so I appreciate, again, back to what I had originally said, I appreciate you digging as much as you could in the two-week period of time. I know NOAA is a busy organization. However, I feel like when a city reaches out to you and you have to, you know, a couple of weeks to respond, like, I'm disappointed that we didn't receive a response. And so, you know, I do have some concerns. It's like, overall, I want to support something like this. I, I see the good in a sanctuary. I see the good when it's, you know, climate-oriented, protecting our oceans, those sorts of things. I don't think any of us are against that. I think we all want to see our ocean thrive and to do whatever we can to, to make sure that it does so. But as council members, I feel like it's my duty to also look at the impacts on our community. Financially, our harbor is, is a very vital, important part of our city. So I have to look at the functionality of our harbor. What does that look like? What are the possibilities if we have to expand our dredging area? What does that look like if we don't have a seat at the table and we are on the menu? And my, and, you know, and the other question I have is that when I was doing some research myself, I did see that while they say they may not necessarily determine whether or not you can have dredging if you already are doing so, but they might take part in analysis of the dredging material that is disposed of. And now there's another layer of, basically another layer to that, that we would have, you know. And so my question, which obviously isn't answered right now, is what happens if they deny our material? Now what? Now what do we do? What does that look like for us? Is it really expensive to dispose of that? Do we have to find a place outside the sanctuary? I have a lot of unanswered questions. And for that reason, it's hard for me to take a complete stance on yes or no, I support this idea and the proposed sanctuary. And so I have a couple of things that I think, and I'm going back to the, kind of where I was the first time around, is I was never against the sanctuary. I just felt like there were some needs that we had that needed to be met before we got on board with the sanctuary idea. So, so having said all of that, and I know it's getting late, I feel like if we were to move forward with support of the sanctuary, that there, we would again have some things that we would ask of NOAA to put into place before we would have full support. Because I feel like after the conversation we had tonight, we have enough concerns where we can't just point-blank say, yeah, exactly as proposed. We're comfortable with it all. Let's move forward with a letter of support. And maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like if we were to do a letter of support of the sanctuary, that we have some concerns, such as the name. We have concerns if it's, if it's, if we were to ask for them to go back to the original border and where it encases Morro Bay, are we interested in that? Or are we happy with the new proposed sanctuary that doesn't include the area of Morro Bay? Because it goes back to also the Advisory Council. If we want to have a seat at that table, how can we ask for that if we're not wanting them to increase their borders to cover our area? So those are some of my concerns going into this. And so honestly, I feel like I'm, I don't know where to go from here other than the fact that like, sure, I want to support it. However, I have some concerns. And I realize tomorrow's the last day to comment. So with that being said.
Thank you. I, I, too, had this item before me. And my council then voted unanimously, myself and Mayor Peters, Councilmember Smuckler, all of us with a lot of different positions and everything, voted unanimously in opposition of the sanctuary. And I, you know, we had some questions from people saying, why did council before do that? And, you know, our position has always been to support our commercial fishing industry, and it should always be to support our commercial fishing industry. They are stewards of the oceans also, just like ranchers and farmers are. You know, the, that environment is as important to them as anybody else for them to make their, their living. And when I spoke with the president of the Commercial Fishmen's Association on Sunday, their position has not changed. They have one seat on the Advisory Council that's representative of this whole coast area. And I think the person was, has their boat in Morro Bay right now, but they're from Avalon. And they, they weren't happy at all. They expressed total displeasure with, with the situation and that, you know, they're not included in this. I, I know Director Shifon couldn't answer those questions. And I know, you know, I don't, I don't have the expertise to answer, you know, does California have protections? And yes, they do. We all know they do. You can't do offshore oil drilling anymore, mining. It's all banned. We have a, you know, a lot of environmental regulations that would prohibit it. And certainly, the federal administration isn't going to allow it either. So I'm not concerned about that. We had some options before us, and our previous position has been in opposition of the sanctuary. Our position that I've taken representing us to this point unofficially has been that we've taken no position on it because, you know, we didn't want to. And I kind of feel with the lack of information that we're getting and so many questions unanswered that perhaps for us right now, that's just still our best position to take is that, you know, we're not going to take a position. I agree with Councilmember Landrum. I, I think that the name of the sanctuary needs to be more inclusive to our other Native American tribes in this community, as you heard at our last meeting from a speaker. And, and I totally agree with that. And, you know, questions from information we all received questioning validity of some of the participants. So I'm not interested in going down that path with such short notice. And I think this was just really to have this conversation and determine if we wanted to change our position, if we wanted to continue to advocate for opposition, if we wanted to support the, the project, or if we just want to take no position. And for me, right now, my position would be to take no position.
Mayor Wixson, can I ask you a question? If, you know, if that's the direction that we decide to go with no position, are we at all interested? I guess this is a question for all of us, not just the mayor. But are we interested in, in writing a letter during this last bit of comment period that does request or gives some suggestions and some, and, you know? Do we want to make a comment, is what I'm trying to say? Not taking a position, but more of a, like, you know?
We're not taking a position, but these are our comments?
Maybe, I don't know.
These are our concerns?
Concerns, unanswered questions, those sorts of things. And I don't know if that's something that we're interested in doing. But I feel like if we are feeling like our, like we have no answers and we're feeling kind of, if we're feeling frustrated that we don't have these answers. And I have, I mean, let's be honest, it's more than likely probably going to take place. Like, this is, we have a lot of people that are in support of it. What, and I don't know if they're going to change the borders. I don't know. I don't know what's happening. But what I'm going to say is that, like, if this does happen, I think we, as a city, should know what we're, what we're dealing with. And so do we want to put those questions forward? Or those concerns forward in this comment period and hope that they're addressed? I don't know.
I would support that.
Yeah.
I would look to Director Shifon, see if there's any comment on that. Do you have any input, any comments?
I mean, there's, I, I hate to say that, you know, any comment by the city of Morro Bay would not be looked at. I, I believe they would look at it. Whether it will have any impact, given the fact that they're 99.9% done with their comment period, I don't know. But that's certainly council's decision to make a statement, whether it's, you know, we have concerns, we, we're not going to change anything regarding our position, or our position is, we take no position, but these are our concerns. I did get, and I, just prior to this meeting, and I'm sorry I didn't have a chance for it to be part of the public, but a draft from Reach who basically did a letter indicating they're not opposed or favoring it, but these are their concerns, and that's all their letter states. So something similar, you know, could be done. It memorializes.
Yeah, probably. I think that's what I'm hearing. I, I know that time is very limited, and we're not expecting something to be, you know, I think just those comments that you're hearing from us, the concerns that we haven't got these questions answered that, that were submitted, that we don't have an opportunity to have a seat at the table, concerned about, you know, what that looks like for future dredging and things, you know? I mean, the things with the, that we discussed, do you need, do you have enough information from us?
What I have is there's concern about the name and not, not being inclusive to the local native tribes, not having a seat at the table to the Advisory Council, our continued support for commercial fishing industry and not knowing the impact it will have on them, and then the potential, again, impact on dredging that we just can't seem to quantify.
That suffice? Is there anything else?
I think so. I mean.
Yeah, and I know we have a very small window there. So I think that we submitted, and at least we know we've done our, our due diligence to provide that comment, so.
So then, can I clarify? Is the position that you're taking no position or you're?
No position.
I think we'd be here all night long if we had to pick one. I'm just, I'm not going to lie.
And if you're good with that, then I believe we can move on to item C3. And this is going to be Mr. Qualick.
Thank you, Mayor Wixson. Another opportunity for public comment by the City Council of Morro Bay. So in this case, we're dealing with the proposed Los Osos project. I'm going to give just a little bit of information that I know about the project and talk about some potential public comments that the City Council could make that I put together based on input from the PWA. And would be happy to take questions from there. We also do have Ron Munz, who's the general manager of Los Osos CSD here in the room. I asked him to come tonight in case there's questions about his project, so. And this will just be a verbal presentation. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. But as the City Council may know, that our neighbor town of Los Osos only has one water supply currently. That's their groundwater. And that groundwater basin is in critical overdraft because of years of overpumping. So at some point earlier this year, the Los Osos CSD Board directed their staff to look into some other water supply options. And I apologize, it may have been last year. I don't, I don't have the date of that board action. And so one of the ideas floated was to look at connecting with state water, either through the city of Morro Bay or just directly to the state water pipeline, the Chora Valley Pipeline that, that serves Morro Bay. And there were some staff-level conversations, I believe even before that board direction that I had with Mr. Munz about a potential project that would be mutually beneficial to the city of Morro Bay and to the community of Los Osos. The summaries of those conversations were brought to the Wharf Subcommittee, probably going back over a year and a half ago. And those conversations sort of died out after the floods and hadn't heard too much about it. And now we are looking at a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration document from Los Osos CSD, which I believe was put out in late September for a 30-day comment period. And so that comment period ends October 27th at 5:00 PM. And so I wanted to bring it to the attention of council. I emailed council about it soon after I looked at the email a couple of weeks ago. At that point, it was already too late to bring it to the previous council meeting. So here we are, with just a few days left to put in a public comment, if the City Council wishes to do that. So I did put in some potential public comments in the staff report. I'll summarize them. First, because this project, as proposed currently, goes through the city of Morro Bay boundaries, I propose that we comment that we would want the Los Osos CSD to engage with the city on any potential environmental impacts that occur within our boundaries. Two, that if this project is seriously being considered, and this is more of a comment to the county, but that, so if, if the project is being considered, that we have, have a demonstration of the idea that there is capacity in the Chora Valley Pipeline to supply the community of Los Osos with 200 acre-feet-per-year of water, of state water, which, again, is, is what they're proposing to do at that quantity. Three, if this project is to be considered seriously, that, and again, this is more of a comment to the county, but that the, that it be demonstrated how the community of Los Osos would pay their fair share of infrastructure costs. One, with the infrastructure costs that the city of Morro Bay paid into the Chora Valley Pipeline. And two, into the coastal branch, the entire infrastructure that paid for the coastal branch section of, of the state water project, which the subcontractors have paid into. And if Los Osos were to join without paying into any of those costs, those historical costs that have already been paid, they'd essentially be getting a free ride on that. And then four, more on a positive note, a request in the public comments that the community of Los Osos consider collaborating with the city on potentially mutually beneficial projects, such as a parallel recycled water pipeline. That was a suggestion from the PWA. A white, a water pipeline that allows for sale of Morro Bay water to Los Osos CSD, which had been discussed with the previous Wharf Subcommittee. And a conjunctive use agreement, which had also been talked about with the previous Wharf Subcommittee. So a conjunctive use agreement would be a scenario in which the city of Morro Bay can sell water to the community of Los Osos during wet years, when we don't need the water, to allow Los Osos to refill their basin. But then it would be a two-way pipe where during drought years, there would be there would be the potential for the community of Los Osos to send back water to Morro Bay when we needed it and they didn't. So, those are the four options that I proposed for your consideration, there may be other options, and again, that's up to the city council. I would also like to just mention that any individual can also provide Los Osos CSD with comments about their environmental document. So, I believe that that's already happening. That might be a question for Mr. Munz, whether they're receiving public comments, but anyone is welcome to do that. But again, because there is a perception and belief that this might impact the City of Morro Bay's ability to get state water, I did want to bring this to the council tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. I will start with questions with Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that report, Director Qualick. I have one question at this time, it's regarding option number four on the public comments. When you were mentioning having a pipe that goes between the two areas, if we were to be able to give them or sell them our water, would it be, it would be before, so it'd be the water that is cleansed before it goes into the injection wells, or would it be after it sits in the wells and then it would come out, like, how would, do we even know?
The level of treatment?
Yeah, like, what level of treatment would it need for us to do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Ford, it's a good question. From a permitting standpoint, it would be much simpler if, under that scenario, under that proposal, Los Osos were to simply connect to the City of Morro Bay's system, rather than, and so, at that point, our system would already be treated, it'd be considered municipal mix, and then we would send them that water. Because right now, the permitting that we're working on for injection, again, we wouldn't be able to use water that's, that goes through advanced purification directly for drinking water. And, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of exactly how Los Osos would use that water on their end, if it would be directly connected to their drinking water system, which is implied in the current document that we have here today, or if they plan on treating it. I don't believe that they would be treating it if it's coming down South Bay Boulevard, state water's already treated, and so, that might just add an additional complication if we took that approach.
That's it for questions from me right now, thank you.
I mean, this is very preliminary where we are right now, so we're looking at, you know, an environmental report that hasn't come back, it's not a project that's moving forward at this point, it's definitely not our project. So, this is kind of a tough, tough situation to know what they're going to do, and moreover, what is the county going to go for? I guess that's just more of a statement.
Well, I'll just share, if I may, Mayor and Councilmember Edwards, that you're correct, Los Osos really doesn't have a viable project until their environmental document is approved by their board, which hasn't happened yet, and I know that they have not yet formally asked the county to connect to state water. And so, this is, this is in a lot of ways all conceptual until that environmental document is signed. So, yeah, there is no, yeah, I mean, we're a long ways off yet.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, our ask tonight is about sending a letter commenting on this before the end, right, for the mitigated negative dec-
Yes.
Correct, thank you.
That's correct.
Councilmember Barton?
I wanted to thank you for the level of, how you looked into all the different aspects that could play into this situation. It's complicated, and when you first start into it, it's like, ugh, what are, how is that going to work out? In normal city talk, back and forth, it seemed like there would be some kind of a, we would have heard about this sooner and not be hearing about it so, right now. So, it's, it's an interesting exercise in how to, how to make this work, and there's only so much water, we all need it, and, you know, how does that, how does that work out? So, I thank you for the level of work that you put into this. And you're right, Mayor, we're just being asked to do a couple of, couple of things here, so it's not, it's not necessarily the huge, the huge thing that it could be, so.
I would just like to ask, it's been, we had a correspondent asking, could you explain the, there's a bit of controversy regarding Mr. Heimel's role working for the City of Morro Bay, and also, I believe, is he on a board in Los Osos, a water board in Los Osos, or some affiliation with the board there, and just, could you address that, please?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum, and I believe this issue has actually come up and was addressed by the city attorney at a previous meeting.
Yes, so, Mr. Heimel's work with Los Osos, when I reviewed the contract that he has with them, and then the work for us, I didn't see a conflict of interest. If at some point that occurred, then the city could either, along with Los Osos, sign waivers, or he'd have to pick an agency to work with. But at the present, his duties don't conflict.
And I'll just, I'll just add to that as one point of clarification, that Mr. Heimel is a consultant working for the City of Morro Bay on the recycled water project. To my understanding, unless something's changed, and I haven't talked to him about this in a while, but he does not have a direct, he's not working on any direct projects with Los Osos CSD, he's rather the executive director of the Basin Management Committee, which is an adjudicated, so that basin is adjudicated, and the state has required Los Osos CSD and the other two water purveyors in Los Osos, Golden State Water and S&amp;T Water, to regularly meet about water issues. And so, he serves as the, sort of, the staff of that, he does not work directly with Los Osos CSD.
Thank you. Would this potentially affect our flow, or, you know, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, hydrogeologist, or whatever this requires, but if it's, if it's going to be, the water's going to be tapped before it gets to Morro Bay, would that affect our, I don't know what the right term is for it, but.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum, and it's a good one, and I think we would want, you know, again, if this project were to move forward as proposed, we'd want some formal statement from the county beyond a letter from the '90s, just affirming that. According to the county, there is capacity in the Chorro Valley Pipeline for Los Osos, it was designed that way, again, according to the county, and based on the document that I attached to the staff report. I'll also say that it's maybe little-known, but there, that Chorro Valley Pipeline was designed and built with a turnout for Los Osos at South Bay Boulevard. That turnout was actually exposed during our project, our conveyance project, and we have a picture of that. And so, you know, take that for what it's worth, but there was clearly some idea that one day, Los Osos might connect to that Chorro Valley Pipeline. Again, the question about flows, the document that I've included in the staff report purports to answer that question. I think we'd want to run those calc's ourselves to be 100% sure. But beyond that, the City of Morro Bay has a contract with the Slow County Water Conservation and Flood Control District to receive 1,313 acre-feet per year of state water, and we have contractual protections that we will receive that water. So, you know, to me, it's out of the question that anything that Los Osos could pull out of that pipe would impact our water allocation in any way. I mean, if, if the county allowed for that, then that would be a breach of our contract.
Thank you, and then, just, because it's, the Chorro Creek has been identified as, by some people, as the preferable aquifer for injection, and would any of this affect that if we were ever to pursue that in the future?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I don't see how it would, because on the one hand, this project proposes to tie in Los Osos directly to the Chorro Valley Pipeline, which is state water, and the project that you mentioned, that could potentially be located in the Chorro Basin, would be our own recycled water. So, it's two different water sources.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to withhold my questions till we come back for comment. Public comment is open on item C3.
Guess they gave me the nod, Terry Simons. To say this is a complicated issue would be an understatement. To think that this is a small ask, and that you don't really have to pay attention now because you can deal with it later, I think is a huge mistake. This is water. In California, we fight over water. What we all need to do is go out and have a couple shots of whiskey, because that's what we have fun with. But water is serious business in California. The document that's in the staff report seems to indicate that the existing pipeline is a 16-inch pipeline to the turnout point. It's my understanding that this document is old, and when it was, when the pipeline was actually built, Los Osos had dropped out of the process, so they downsized that to a 10-inch pipeline. Mr. Qualick obviously hasn't had time yet, or the opportunity to investigate the engineering that is, should be preceding this environmental document. I have, I've talked to the environmental consultants, they don't have, or don't seem to want to give me their base engineering documents that explain the project that they're doing their environmental report on. So, I'm a little lost at what's exactly going on. It's exciting that Mr. Munz is here tonight, because clearly, this is his project. Now, he's also part of the Basin Management Commission that Mr. Heimel represents, or works as their staff engineer. There will come a point where there will be a potential for conflict of interest because of the two entities if we get into a dispute with Los Osos. I would hope, and I have encouraged all along for the last couple of years, that we be good neighbors to Los Osos. Right now, we're sending in the neighborhood of a million gallons of water a day, very high-quality water, which we spent a fortune first to buy from the state, and then to put into our distribution system. We only get about half of it back in our sewer system, the other half goes to irrigation and all kinds of things. So, there's a continual loss of water. So, we're never going to get free of state water. We're always going to be needing some state water, but theoretically, we can reduce our demand for state water as our program advances. In the meantime, we could be two or three years, where we could literally give our water to Los Osos if they want to build a pipeline and let them do with it what they want. They can certainly go to recharge their basin, because we're not in a position to recharge our own basin, because we didn't stay up to speed when we were doing the whole Wharf project. It's very frustrating, and I'm out of time. I've, and Mr. Qualick and I've been communicating back and forth with this for quite some time. It's all tied into the whole Morro Bay water program. Thank you.
Betty Winholz, I've sent you a list of nine items that I hope some of those will be included in your comments. I think it's very much like the sanctuary item, where you may not take a stand, but you have concerns. And I agree with Mr. Simons that now is the time to do that, you can't let it get down the road too far and get away from us. And just to hit on some of those briefly, that this has been around for a while, but neither a council nor a, one of our advisory bodies have ever thought this was significant enough that we should be involved with it, so I think that's interesting. Again, the comment about Mr. Heimel at some point, I think, will become an issue if it's not now, at least the appearance of conflict is there. I think it's important to note that the environmental impact is being downplayed by using the mitigated negative declaration, rather than an EIR, because it is going through, and at least adjacent to, some very sensitive escher, and that that's being overlooked. And I would note that the horizontal drilling that was done at Willow Camp Creek along the bicycle trail, in my opinion, from what I saw, was not very successful, and I would hate to see that kind of thing happen under Chorro Creek. And I think that we do know, in light of the fiber optics that went under South Bay this past year, that there's a lot of crowdedness under that road. How do we know we can even, not us, how does Los Osos know it can even get another pipe in there? It's a very impacted area. And to what degree have they talked to state parks about it? We've talked about, and it's already been mentioned, I don't need to mention again, where are the resolutions about where they're tying in, what money do we get back, what are the alternatives? That's not our problem, but they should be coming up with alternatives that need to be evaluated. And then, above all, above all, please do not consolidate this permit. We've had that mistake in the past, we don't need to do it again. Please do not consent to a consolidated permit.
Paul Donnelly again. Just want to mention in the staff report, the first, the first paragraph in the background and last sentence, it says, "As such, LOCSD aims to purchase state water directly from the San Luis Obispo County Water Conservation and Flood Control District, a move which could preclude an opportunity for the City of Morro Bay to sell water to LOCSD." It's Measure G that precludes the city from selling any of our state water to anyone without a vote of the people. Joe Pononi pinned on that when we were on the Wharf CAC. One of the things about what they propose to do is that the pipe that they're going to use to tap into our pipe is larger than the Chorro Valley Pipeline where they want to tap into. And where they want to tap into our pipe, that pipe was not designed for such a feature. At that location, you'd have to replace several lengths of that pipe with thicker steel pipe and weld it, and that means it would be put out of service for months. We would not be getting any deliveries of water while they take that section of pipe out of service. Also, there's several different valves going upstream that would also have to be replaced to handle the additional flow. The thing that concerns me more than anything is that then, when they poke that hole in the side of that pipe, that the hydraulic rail line will dip, and we are, deliveries will be curtailed to some point where it might actually pulsate as it comes in. So, the big concern of mine is the integrity of the line. It was, it was designed as a transmission line to the City of Morro Bay, and it was in the idea that while we put in that T at South Bay Boulevard, we were still contemplating on cemental water, but then the community of the water purveyors in Los Osos decided not to go with that, and the water, the pipe went to San Luis Obispo instead. And so, for that reason alone, that the pipe is dedicated solely for deliveries to Morro Bay, and it shouldn't be touched by anyone. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ron Munz, the general manager of Los Osos CSD. I just want to emphasize the project intent, and it is conceptual at this point, but we need to get an environmental document certified, so we have an actual project. I've been in discussions with the county on this for three years, in terms of capacity. They still haven't come up with a formula for, you know, cost share, the fair share. It's not our intent to limit the amount of water that could flow to Morro Bay, like Director Qualick said, that, you know, contractually, the county has to be able to deliver that water to you. So, analysis will be done. There was a 2017 or 18 study done that showed that the pipeline, the Chorro Valley Pipeline, has the capacity, and actually could benefit for more flow because of the way it's designed and the lack of deliveries, you know, like, Morro Bay has the 1,000 three- and the lack of deliveries. You know, like Morro Bay has the 1,313 acre feet, you're taking about 1,000. So there's, you know, unused capacity there. The same is for CMC and some of the other turnouts along that pipeline. So, you know, I'm taking all of these concerns seriously. We're not here to impact Morro Bay. Our intent is to have a connection to the regional infrastructure. As Director Qualick said, you know, we have our single basin. It's contaminated with seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer, nitrate contamination in the upper. We're, we have a plan. The progress with the plan is looking like we're improving. But if we can bring in just a small amount of supplemental water to offset our pumping, especially during wet years, that's when we'd want to take water, is when water's available in the system and there's unused capacity. And again, pay our fair share. This is all, we're just trying to, because our groundwater basin is actually fairly large. It has 120,000 acre feet. But because of the overdraft in the 1980s, 90s, and into the early 2000s, the seawater intrusion is problematic. And we see by reducing pumping some good wet years, like our, our water levels came up over two feet this last winter. So if we can then reduce, use supplemental water, we can recover quicker and we can have a more resilient and better water supply. The other main concern for me is climate. We don't know what's going to happen. I'm not a big fan of state water. I think the future is kind of grim for it when you're looking out 30 or 40 years. But we have regional infrastructure, and I know the county is looking at regional issues, solutions to use that infrastructure at some point in time in the future when state water becomes unreliable or could become unreliable. So that, that's really, really the end of more, of Los Osos is to have a connection. We will work with the county, we'll work with Morro Bay. There's already other subcontractors that have expressed interest in selling water because they're not using their allocations. So there's options. You know, partnership with Morro Bay would be number one. You know, we're joined by more than just South Bay Boulevard. You know, our kids go to each other's schools, you know, we, we shop here, you know. If you ever need to get out of Morro Bay when the tourists or traffic's really high, come to Los Osos and hang out. Anyway, we've got this wonderful partner, or resource out here, the bay. That's what connects us. I'd love to see us work more in cooperation, you know, because, you know, we talked about solid waste and other things. You know, if we work together on some of these issues as a community, as two communities, you know, join together, I think we could do a lot more for both of our, your city and our community. So anyway, this is, I'm, I understand all the, the issues, and we're not here, I'm not here tonight to try to convince you that I have all the answers, but I can guarantee to you that I will do everything we can to make sure Morro Bay is not impacted by our project. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I just, I just, this, my, this whole subject just blows my mind. 27 years ago, the city of Morro Bay took delivery of state water on September of 97. I've been listening to this for months. This is the Estero Bay News, August 15, 2022, and October 22, 22, front page, "Los Osos Going to Take, Do State Water, Intertight Project, Blah, Blah, Blah." And I'm being cool. I'm trying to be calm, okay? The city must have known that this was coming, and we've all talked about transparency. And I, I like this council because you're giving it to us, but maybe your staff needs to up the, up their part on that. So even as Mr. Muns said, this has been going on since 2017 or so, Measure G passed. I walked these streets many times to get it passed, and Measure J sealed the deal. It's our state water. We paid for it. It's not to be sold, and that is exactly what are in these measures, if you'd like to read them. So that brings me sort of to like, who did staff work for? Do they have the town's best interest at hand? What about Dan Heimel? He works in Los Osos for the groundwater basin management committee, and that's exactly what Mr. Muns just said, that they're trying to protect their groundwater basin. They don't have enough water. Their council or their CSD, if they're, I don't even believe the CSD existed at that time, that they didn't take state water. Because that's what the pipes were sized for in the little memo that they dug up at the county, but they didn't give you the rest of it. Like why Los Osos is not taking it back 30 years ago? Paul is not just somebody who knows about state water. He was the project engineer. He watched every, almost every piece of pipe for the state water, Chorvalle Pipeline, going to the ground. He went to the, he went to the company that makes the pipe and watched how it was made. He understands the entire process. The man is a walking knowledge book. So these aren't just his opinions. These are his facts. State water is considered unreasonable use to put in the ground, which is what Los Osos wants to do with it. It's Section 100 of the State Water Code. We don't want their water back. It's going to be contaminated. I think they need to build their own pipe, and we can sell them off our recycled water at some point that we don't need because we don't really have anywhere to put it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP?
Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Questions or comments? I'll start with you, Councilmember Landrum.
Okay. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, maybe a few minutes.
Councilmember Barton, questions or comments?
We are being asked to, to make comments back to Los Osos, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's that's basically what we can do at this point. So, so I think that's, that's where I'm going to come down on, on just making the comments back that, that fit the situation from our perspective. So, yeah.
Recommendations. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I can go if you're
Yeah, I'm going to ask a real quick question, if you don't mind. City Attorney Newmeyer, do you have any comment on the two measures, G and J, as far as what can and can't be sold outside the city limits? Do you have that information handy or?
I would need to do some further review on that, but I'm not clear on how that relates to Los Osos circulating a draft mitigated negative declaration and us providing comments if and when they have a project, which my understanding right now, the project is to tie into state water, not to take the current water that we're getting. If the proposal was for, if, if Los Osos proposed to tap into the water we've already purchased from the state, then I could see there'd be in a need for Measure G and Measure J to be analyzed. But my understanding is that their project right now is to tap into the state water supply that services agencies all throughout the state. And so I'm not clear how that impacts the water that we're getting. They're not buying our water. They're buying state water, is, is what they're proposing.
Thank you for
But I'm happy to analyze, at council direction, Measure G and J's impacts on this evolving issue.
Thank you. And we can circle back with you to follow up on that. Thank you. Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Landrum.
Yeah, I, maybe this is for Mr. Muns. If I understand this correctly, you're wanting to get, or Los Osos is wanting to get some access to some state water that is not Morro Bay's state water, right? It's not part of our 13, 13 acre feet of water. It's
No, me not knowing about your measures, you know, take, what Morro Bay, what I envisioned what Morro Bay could do is that 300 acre feet you're not using, we could offset your costs that you're carrying that on your books as a state water, or state water subcontractor. But that said, my other option is to work directly with the county on allocation. They have 14,000 acre feet of unallocated water right now. That's been paid for by the countywide taxpayers, you know, including Los Osos. So there's water out there that the county is wanting to allocate, and so we could go after a small allocation from that. But then it comes to capacity and paying for that capacity. The other option, like I mentioned, was buying it from another state water subcontractor that is willing to sell their allocation, and then we would be able to purchase directly into the project. So, long story short, those would be the three. If number one option, using some of the state water that Morro Bay has that they're not using is impossible from a legal perspective, we wouldn't pursue that.
Okay, but you're, you're looking to get state water, and, and you're looking to get it to recharge your aquifer?
No, we're getting it to take it directly because it's treated. What that allows us to do is decrease our pumping, which allows our aquifer to recover during wet years. So what it is, that'll slowly push the seawater intrusion front out, and then what they call bring the groundwater basin back into balance, where there's enough pressure from the groundwater to keep seawater out, and that then we would have enough water technically for the community, just from our groundwater basin.
Okay, I think I'm grasping that. And then why wouldn't you be interested in, instead of this prospect, and why wouldn't you be interested in purchasing our?
Recycled water.
Recycled water.
We don't have a, well, right now, Los Osos uses the recycled water from the county's wastewater system for percolation. So it's going into recharge right now. But we don't have injection wells, which we would need if we took direct recycled water from the city of Morro Bay, because we don't have another area to perk it. We'd have to inject it. So that's a tremendous amount of expense and process, as you're seeing.
Oh, we know, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Burts?
It sounds to me, from Mr. Muns, that we are, that you, your community is open to having continued conversation with our community, and I'm happy to hear that. It sounds like there, there is some information that we probably need to have come back to us with regard to Measure G and J and how that affects us. It doesn't seem that we're quite to the point of discussing the reclamation aspect and whether or not we can even sell or give or whatever you want to call it, water to Los Osos. So in my mind, I'm, I'm thinking that I, staff's recommendations and the points that you've made, I think the conversation needs to continue. These are some of the items that we probably should continue having discourse about, since, quite frankly, there's no project that exists yet. So we're kind of at that preliminary stage. But it sounds to me like it might be a good idea, Mr. Qualick, if we were to be discussing potential opportunities.
And, thank you, Councilwoman Edwards. Are you saying that we should at some point be discussing those opportunities amongst ourselves and coming to some consensus? Or do you mean that we should be discussing those opportunities with Los Osos CSD?
Within not having their project, actually a viable project yet, it just seems to me that it might be a great opportunity, I guess, to keep conversing with them on the future relationship that we have with them with regard to water. Just a statement, I guess.
Councilmember Edwards, if I could suggest, I don't know if tonight's the night, but council might want to consider having a future agenda item come back on these options involving the Los Osos project. To be clear for the public, right now, there's simply an environmental document that's been circulated, and the council's being asked if they want to comment on it. If and when there's an actual project and a proposal that goes to the county and they actually, you know, have some, you know, real details, you know, I'd suggest that the city at that point could certainly be vigorously engaged in our options and perhaps leveraging our portfolio, seeing what the financial, you know, opportunities are there, looking at the legal restrictions, et cetera.
And if I may jump in to, I think many of you have already made this point, as well as Mr. Newmeyer, our opportunity tonight is to provide public comment for Los Osos CSD. In my proposed comments, which again, it's up to the city council if they want to choose one or all of those or other comments, but I tried to capture what I saw as, as being the community concerns. So on the one hand, what's the opportunity we may be missing? On the other hand, what are the environmental impacts? What's the capacity of the pipe? And what about those historical costs that Morro Bay's paid into? So those comments were designed to really cover all of that.
Councilmember Ford? No?
I, I don't have any further questions. And, yeah. And so are, do we, is it like the last one where, do we need to make a motion, or are we just giving you direction?
Direction. But I'm going to, I'm going to make some comments first.
Oh, well, in terms of direction, do you want me to comment on that now or wait for?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that I'd suggest that council vote on whether they want to have Director Qualick in the name of the city council submit either these four comments, some of them, more of them, et cetera.
Thank you. I keep circling back, reminding myself that this is, this is just these comments going for this, that there is not a pro, it's not, we're not being asked of things yet. And that being said, I, I, sitting on the subcommittee, you know, getting emails and things, and the concern that, you know, the size of the Morro Bay state water line, you know, is that compatible? Talking about selling any of our water portfolio makes me very nervous. The idea of the spill, as they call it, you know, water that can be sold. But it's ironic that we're talking over here about building IPR because we're required to based on a loan we took out for buildout, and then we'll turn around and sell state water we already have that we could use for the buildout. So it's, it's pretty frustrating. Just quick math, just for the sake of sharing, city of Morro Bay paid approximately $650,000 to $745,000 a year from the citizens here, ratepayers, for the state water line. You average that out over the 30-year period of the loan, it's approximately $21 million that we paid. We have 44% of the capacity. CMC, Questa County Ops Center, and then, you know, if Los Osos were to go and question on Los, or on Questas, they're looking at building housing. So is their capacity going to change coming out? Frustrated that we're looking at building IPR into our water portfolio as required by the state, but yet all these years, Los Osos hasn't even headed down that path, knowing that they've had this basin problem. And, and they're looking at a 93-house subdivision over there right now with no water. So, yeah, it's, you know, my responsibility is to be a good neighbor, but my responsibility is to the water portfolio for the city of Morro Bay. So I'm going to be very cognitive of that every step we take regarding this and making sure that is 100%, you know, first and foremost for our community and being good neighbors secondary. So with that, I would support us sending comments on the EIR. I'll look to one of you if you I'll look to one of you if you want to make a motion.
Could we add that we direct the community development director to not...
The public works director?
Yes, to not consolidate coastal permit and an encroachment permit, and must keep the issue here, and that you, the issue must be kept here for our consideration, for our planning commission to hear.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. So at this time, we're not considering consolidation of a coastal development permit, that's not before us.
Well, just so that...
If, so, yeah, I mean, I would just add that that would come before council again.
Okay.
And, and your, and your other...
No, so, so the negative declaration is there, instead of doing an EIR?
Yes, it's like a less intensive form of, of an environmental document than an EIR.
So by us agreeing to this, we're agreeing to not doing the full...
No, so we, we actually wouldn't be agreeing, so we don't have any authority to approve the negative mitigated declaration. So that, that authority belongs to Los Osos CSD. They do have a required thirty-day comment period so that they can consider whether they're going to approve it, and that's what we're providing comment to if, if we approve the comment.
Okay. I, I just, I would like to, I, I think it's smart to consider, to request that they do do a full environmental, a full EIR. It just seems...
It closes in two days. This closes on the twenty-seventh.
Right, but I mean, isn't this the comment? Like, can't we make that...
Yeah, Council, oh, go ahead, Mr. Graham.
Yeah, I do, indulge me for a second. So wanting them to do an EIR, their environmental document that's, that's out on the street for your comment that's in front of you this evening is for a mitigated negative declaration, you would have to look at the mitigated negative declaration, find the findings in that document inadequate, and provide comment related to one of those that is not adequately mitigated, which would, which would be the suggestion why they would do an EIR. It's not just that you want them to do an EIR, it's that there's some specific issue or item that was not adequately evaluated in the environmental document that's in front of you. If you don't want them to ignore the comments, I guess I would say, at the end. It can be made by individuals, it can be by the council, I'm just not sure that...
It just seems like it's such a, you know, tender little area there, that, you know, everything should be really done to the most, you know...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing with environmental documents, you take a look at what the impacts are, they add, there's several in here that require mitigation, so if you look at the MND, there are lots of mitigation measures in there, related to all different types of things, related to environmentally sensitive habitat, impacts to aquatic resources, impacts to biological resources, those types of things, and they have mitigation for all of those things and a number of other things as well. That's what I was saying, if you, if you want them to do an EIR, really would have to be based on something that they've not done adequately in, in this document, and you have to be commenting on that specifically in hopes that they would maybe go down the, the road of the EIR, and that would just be really looking at some additional mitigation potentially, and, and then if they did do an EIR, there would be an alternative analysis associated with it.
All right, thank you.
That's about the only difference.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't know.
I'm going to make a motion.
So what I got from that is that we're not adding any, there's nothing to add to this list. Okay. Okay, I, at this point then, I will move that we consider the staff recommended public comment options responsive to the draft IS and MND by the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three thirty-day public comment deadline, and I guess all that were included in the suggestion one through four. Do I need to go any more detail than that?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Future agenda items?
I have one. Sorry to prolong this meeting. I'm, I would like to ask for an update on where we are at on the Boys and Girls Club project, or, you know, the, the facility that we have been in discussion, I guess, you know, the lease that we have with them, where we are, because I feel like we put that forward a while ago, and I haven't really heard anything, and I would like to get an update on that.
Do you want that before council, or do you want that just to be sent to council from staff to determine if we need to bring it back?
Um, could do it that way.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I can just briefly answer the question so the entire council and the public can, can hear. Regarding the agreement, we did a quick research this, this afternoon, and that property in question had an agreement, we had an agreement, city had an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club. It's a five-year agreement, started twenty-twenty-two, so the five years will run, the initial term will run out in twenty-twenty-seven, and, yes, there hasn't really been any activities going on in that property. I understand it's because staffing issues and, and it's on, it's because Boys and, Boys and Girls Club have some issues that they couldn't resolve just yet. It's, yeah, it's been a year, but no real activity going on, and then the recreation manager, Kirk Carmichael, is going to meet with Boys and Girls Club folks very soon to talk about what was the plan moving forward.
Okay. Do you think, I, I would love to hear what that result is from that meeting. I don't know if it's appropriate for a council item, but I...
Maybe get the city manager to provide an update on that information.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I can do that.
We could get an update.
Once we have more information to, for, for city council, okay.
I'd appreciate it, and thanks for that information. I appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
I have, I was contacted recently by two CFAC members, and they were requesting that they would like, and I agree with them, that we have a joint meeting between council and CFAC. They would like to know, have some direction from us, and so they, they want some, yeah, they want some more direction. Do we just want them to look at Measure Q and E, or are there other things that we want them to do? And if, if I may comment on that, Councilmember Landrum, I'm just wondering if there might, right now, we have an interim finance manager, right, or a finance person, and I'm wondering if, I mean, we could engage him, but I'm just wondering...
I think it's more a policy question than a finance question, and so I, I know that our next two agendas are packed, so perhaps we can, I, I would support that. I mean, our, one of our goals, stated goals was to, to utilize and reinvigorate our advisory boards, and so I would, I would certainly welcome that, but it would probably be after the first of the year.
Okay.
I would, you know, refer to the city manager, and we could see if there's support for that.
And I'm just saying that as the liaison to them, that I, I definitely agree. I know they would love to have that conversation, it's just more of when, time.
Yeah, yeah, so I, is there support for that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have it. That being said, is there anything else?
Yeah, one more. And then, just after, because of the feedback I got from my town hall meeting on short-term rentals, I would like to agendize, and it doesn't have to be right away either, a deeper look at, at what's going on with the short-term rentals and, and, you know...
I think we already have that pending, don't we, Mr. Graham? We had put a pause on it, pending it coming back to council on permitting and issuance on the SDRs.
Did we have an actual motion to do that?
We had direction.
Ms. Swanson might be able to help with that.
We had this conversation last, the other day.
We did.
So I'm just, I'm just covering all bases there.
But I think she's bringing it back up again so that we actually have the motion in that concurrence, and it's probably something else that would be brought back, probably after the first of the year, given the loaded agendas.
Can I ask a question regarding the request? So are you asking that we review the current ordinance, or are you asking that we review the enforcement of the ordinance? Or both?
Well, the ordinance, the way I understand the ordinance, it was supposed to be reviewed after it was, you know, put into place, and it, that has never been done. So I think it's a time to look at that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So there is support for that, then? Perfect, thank you. I would remind everyone, our next meeting, we have a joint city council P-Web on November fourteenth at three o'clock. Thank you very much, we're adjourned. Thank you all for staying, we appreciate it.